Back into order. Roll call, please.
Okay. Ms. Garcia, Ms. Miller, Ms. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Garing. Ms. Chesney.
Here.
Ms. Lanning.
Here.
I'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Board members, if you can continue your standing and meet me at the front.
Oh, yeah.
We have a recognition.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I'm excited to present this special recognition tonight. So last month, Dr. Seagres was announced by our Northwest Missouri Association of School Administrator as our region's Assistant Superintendent of the Year, which is a new award, and I think he is the very first to receive that. And I'm going to read what his nominator said. "Dr. Seagres has worked tirelessly for the St. Joseph's School District for many years, and he has been a strong foundational piece for Northwest Massa. He has assisted the St. Joseph's School District through many challenging leadership experiences over the last 10 years and has remained strong during a time when educational leadership is frequently attacked. I applaud Dr. Seagres for his dedication to education in the St. Joseph's School District." Thanks, Dr. Seagres. Congratulations. I just want to give you a quick applause. I did not. Someone special did that.
Is there any audience participation?
No, none turned in.
Okay, and as there is none, is there a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So much.
Thank you, Whitney. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mike. Would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Chesney.
Yes.
Mr. Garing.
Yes.
Ms. Lanning.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
And the motion passes? Six to zero. Is there a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Rhonda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kim. Would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Chesney.
Yes.
Mr. Garing.
Yes.
Ms. Lanning.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
And the motion passes? Six to zero. Had men reports?
Okay, and superintendent's report, I'm going to defer to the later agenda items because you're going to hear them from me tonight, so we'll defer there. So, Ashley.
Thank you.
Kevin's going to pull that up to the very first slide, and you should have this presentation in front of you, so if you want to look at that, yes. Paper clipped with some other documents as well. So if you recall, back in October, we went over the beginning of the year assessment data, and we specifically talked about iReady data, so reading and math, K through eight. Right now, we have middle-of-the-year data, so we're going to go over that, K through eight, reading and math. And then we also have fifth-grade science through our Mastery Connect platform. So, starting on the next slide, we will start with reading, very similar to where on the last slide. You got back all the way up there. There you go.
Sorry.
So hopefully you recall this type of graph from October. And you can see that column over there at the right, that is where our district is at, K through eight for reading. So you can see the green is where our kids are early on, at grade level or above grade level. Below that, you can see the number of students who have been assessed, and then we have some comparison data for the state of Missouri and also national data for other districts who also use the iReady platform. So the assessment window was from December 2nd to December 20th for reading and math. And then if you go to that next slide, this shows you a comparison as to overall progress, K through eight, from last fall to this winter. So as you can see, the early-on-at-or-above-grade level went from 24% to 41%. We also have fewer students below grade level, so in the yellow or the red. That actually, if you add up all of those areas, yellow and red, we've gone from 75% to 58%. All that to say, we are making progress and we are seeing improvement. It's not at the pace that we would like it to be, but we are showing growth. And then on this slide and the next slide, you'll see it broken down by grade level, and it's also compared to last fall. So K through five, and I'll give you a minute just to look at that. Just like last fall, we start to notice wider gaps of learning as we move up in grade levels, but again, we are seeing improvement. And then we can go on to the next one, shows six, seven, and eight. Little bit wider gaps in knowledge there, but very similar to what we saw in the fall, although we do have growth. It's a little bit less growth as we get up into the upper grades. And then the next slide, this data shows you how we are projected to perform on our end-of-the-year state tests. So I also have this page for you as a handout at your stations. I would encourage you to look at that with a chicken scratch. And this just helped me look at iReady data compared to where we ended on the state test last year. So you can see fourth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade. If we hold on to this iReady and we perform where they, we are predicted to perform, we would have an increase in those grade levels. It is third grade and fifth grade that are still a little bit of a challenge. Third grade is actually holding steady. And fifth grade, we scored 38.6 on the MAP test last year, and our predicted proficiency is at 34% for reading. But the other four grade levels, it does show some improvement, which is encouraging. So anyways, I hope that's helpful. I also have one for math we'll talk about here a little bit. And then this data also gives you the state tests that has reading and math. It's the same things, it's just this is into one chart. This kind of helped me compare iReady data to our state test assessments. And then on the next slide, we will shift to math. So you can see 31% of our students are performing either early on, at, or above grade level. Very comparable to the state and the data from the nation for other school districts who are also using iReady. And then the next slide, again, will compare the fall to the winter. And you can see the growth there. Within the green categories, went from 15% to 31%, so that's a nice jump. Students two to three grade levels below went from 37% to 25%. So again, this data just shows we are making progress, we are making growth. It's not at the pace that we would like it to be, but it's an improvement. And then the next slides, we will break it down by grade level. So you can see there, K through five, winter compared to last fall. I'll give you a minute to let that soak in.
Ashley, would you say at the kindergarten level, is that the early learning focus paying dividends, or is that? I mean, that's pretty significant, right? What is that, 10% up to 40?
Yes. It's hard to say.
Yeah.
It really is. And DLO and I did a little, I don't know if she's here, we did a little data crunching in the fall, and we couldn't put our thumb that that was an indicator. We would like to think so, but it's tough because we give priority to students who have learning needs, and those are the ones that we place. And so it just kind of skews it, I think, a little bit. It's hard to tell. It could be giving an advantage to those kids who are most at risk and need that intervention, but it's just hard to pan out into these numbers. I'm a huge advocate for early learning, though. I do think it's beneficial. A third site would be even better.
Thank you.
And then the next slide shows six, seven, and eight fall data compared to our December data. And then that next slide is one that I really like. So if you go to this sheet, again with the chicken scratch, for math, you can kind of see, and I'll point one out, so for example, let's go eighth-grade math. Last year, eighth-grade math scored 17% on the state test. So although that 25% proficiency on this slide may seem like, gosh, that's pretty low, it is, but it would also be growth compared to last year where we ended at 17%. And so that was just a little comparison data for you. So I highlighted fourth grade, sixth, seventh, and eighth would have a jump if we held steady with these projected proficiencies. Third grade would be going down just about 3%. Fifth grade would be holding steady. So it is encouraging, not where we want to be, but it is encouraging in its growth. And then the next slide is fifth-grade science. So this is with our Mastery Connect platform. This was new for fifth-grade science teachers. They did not give a beginning-of-the-year assessment because they were just getting familiar with the platform, receiving some training, and hadn't used that before. So you can see on this one, the middle-of-the-year data in the middle column, that's from our Mastery Connect, and then our actual science MAP scores on the right-hand column. It'll be interesting to see how effectively Mastery Connect predicts how well we perform on the end-of-the-year state test. We don't know that yet because this is new. And you can kind of see where they're at right now compared to where they scored at the end of the year last year. It's definitely been a talking point for our directors and principals as far as their data. I think it's great. We do have an assessment at fifth-grade science, so they can at least try to get a thumb on where we're at with that data. And then just like October, I always think it's nice, on the next slide, we have academic services, our response to this data. So one thing that we noticed, it was a big thing that we put on last Friday's update, was a testing protocol. So we've noticed when we're in classrooms and just observing, you might see some testing with lights turned down or music on, or kids kind of just all over the classroom. And so we wanted to put some procedures and things in writing of what norms we should see in the classroom when we have testing going on, whether that's state testing or regular benchmark testing, diagnostic testing. We should be using the same protocol so that we are preparing kids to take that state test at the end of the year. So that's a big thing that we just went over with our principals on Wednesday, and our team is finalizing some of that feedback now to put in place. And a lot of these things are the same from October, so professional learning, that's something we are always doing for our teachers. And data analysis, so Lacy and Lara, Kendra do a lot of that with our principals. They'll go over all of this data, along with attendance, and they'll talk about staffing and staffing needs. And then instructional coach support is a continuous thing that we help with our teachers and their development. We are piloting a curriculum resource for ELA at elementary, so I think that will be helpful and so that they can have some consistent resources. Small group differentiated instruction, and then continuous coaching of teachers on tier-one instructional practices. So that's just making sure those lessons are on grade level, they're aligned to standards, we have the appropriate rigor that we are supposed to have. We have whole-group instruction, but then also differentiated instruction. So, and then all elementary principals are enrolled and working through letters for administration certification. I think that's important for our elementary principals to have that same training that our reading teachers are receiving, so they know what to look for in the classroom, and so they are all working on that, and some have completed that. And then lastly, efforts to engage parents and guardians. Whenever we have that partnership with parents, we're going to see more academic gains if we're on the same page. And so one thing I know that we've done this year is talking points, which has been an outlet for teachers to be able to communicate directly with families. So those are the things that we are trying to do in response to this data. It's an ongoing process continuously throughout the year. And I think the last one is just any questions? Yes. So are there any questions about all of this data?
Were you able to get any more definitive information about the growth points in the APR?
As far as how that's calculated?
Yeah, like is it still just this nebulous thing that?
It's a mystery machine, if you want me to be honest. Now, I will tell you, we got word from another school district of some calculations, and Kendra was working with our programmer here to try and determine that calculation. It's not been widely communicated to us how that's factored, and so it makes it challenging for us to assess growth and determine how that's going to be calculated on our APR.
And then, so you're able to project, sort of maybe, to project some of the scores and how we're going to finish overall better? Or how do you think that that's going to?
It looks better right now. This, of course, is-
Does that affect the APR?
I'm sorry?
Do you feel like that's going to bring that up to that 70%?
There's so many variables in the APR.
Yeah.
So graduation rate being one of them, if we get to 92%, then we'll get more points. Attendance, if we can get to 80%, we'll get more points. CCR, though, that took us down. And so we are very strategic, though, I will tell you that. Sometimes I feel like we are chasing points, which I don't like to chase points, but it's something we have to be mindful of and thoughtful about. The reality is, this is one assessment on one day, just like the state tests, and if we can't provide timely feedback to our kids, it's hard to make it meaningful. It just is. So that's something with the testing protocol, too, is having that feedback with kids, with families, so that they know where they're performing. I think that's essential to be able to move forward, to know where they're at and set goals.
And I think it's helpful, too, if we have a testing protocol in place so that the MAP test doesn't become this huge giant thing.
Right.
That creates a lot of stress for children because we make it this huge giant thing, and then they're not performing on the test probably to their best ability because we've made it such this big deal. So if we have testing protocol that looks the same all along.
Right.
They'll be able to function better, I feel like, on the test because of the will of practice.
Consistency. Sure. Agreed.
Are there any additional questions or comments?
I like that you're looking at the resource for the ELA.
Yes.
That's going to be outstanding for a lot of our cultural.
Yes, rather than just grabbing this and that, and teaching will actually have a consistent resource for all of them to use. That's important. And the only other thing I will say is, I'm super excited about the Portrait of a Graduate work that we have going on right now, but I'm going to let the committee talk about that in a future board meeting.
Okay, Dr. Seagres?
Yes, the financials. Approval of bills, you've had those for a couple of days. I think if there's any questions, that we've answered those. Without any further questions, I'd ask for approval of the bills, please.
Motion to approve the bills.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion, a second.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Chesney. Mr. Garing.
Yes.
Ms. Lanning.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
And the motion passes? Six to zero. December financials?
Yes, you have in front of you financial summary. We're halfway through our fiscal year right now, 50% to give you a benchmark there to kind of compare. Our expenditures, we're at about 51% of our budget right now. Our operating is at 41%, so we're in good position there. We're showing an overall decrease in expenditures, but before we get real excited about that, I'm going to tell you that's attributed a lot right now to some timing of payments. For example, our music insurance just came in here a couple of weeks ago. That's about $2 million. So we're going to have a budget amendment for you next month, which is going to give us a much clearer picture and give us much closer where we are as far as in relationship with those expenditures. Revenues actually are slightly higher than last year. We're starting now to see a portion of that FY25 tax revenue from the increase, the Prop C rollback there, so we're starting to see a little bit of that. So our tax revenues are up $1.5 million. State revenue is down $782,000. That was expected. We knew we would be down there because of loss of the pre-COVID numbers. The healthcare trust, right now, the assets for the healthcare trust, including the investments, just a little bit over $3.9 million. We're going to, I'm going to talk a little bit about some timing of payments there as well. If you see, there wasn't any payroll this month in the healthcare trust in December as we got to the end of the year, stretching out our cash flow a little bit there at the end of the year. So we will get that caught up this month. If you compare us to last year at this time, we're down about $2.3 million, but that's about exactly the same of what the two payments were behind are, would be from payroll. So we're pretty much right, even with where we were at this time last year in the healthcare trust. The medical plans right now, our total medical is running at a claims ratio to funding of 104%. Running at a little bit of a deficit right now, $344,000 for the year. The EPO is becoming a little bit expensive for us, and I'm actually exploring with Lockton right now. We've discussed, is the EPO financially viable moving forward? And so I'm having that run that again. Right now, it's running at a funding ratio of 146% with a deficit of $818,000 for the year.
Can you explain what the EPO is?
The EPO is the upper-level plan in our health insurance. Employees have to fund part of it, but it's just a little different with how their network is and everything. And about 20% of our employees are enrolled in that.
Thank you.
The PPO is running at 112% with a deficit of $321,000. 34% of our employees are in that plan. And then the HSA, though, is running at a healthy 76% funding ratio with a surplus of $795,000. So again, I had mentioned to you in your, in my update here a couple of weeks ago, we are going to see a pretty significant increase in our health insurance this year. So there's going to need to be a little bit of discussion about how that is absorbed, the healthcare trust absorbed the small increase last year. The board's probably going to have to step up and absorb more of that this year. So, and again, I'm looking at that EPO for what it looks like from the long term, but I'm having those conversations with Lockton. I see Gabe wants to say something.
Well, I do. I think that EPO, if you, if you compare or research other districts, there's not too many school districts that offer that anymore. A lot of them have went to the PPO and the HSA plan. So, and I think if you go to two options, we're in a really good spot as a school district. Five years ago, our percent of employees on the HSA plan was less than 10%. And so I think we're in a really good spot. So I think you'll see a recommendation from us to get rid of that EPO plan.
And we've talked about that for-
Yeah, we've talked about it for a couple of years. Yeah, it's just one of those that, it sounds counterintuitive, but if all of those, when we looked at it the last time, if they all moved to another plan, you wouldn't have the additional funding coming in from them. So it didn't save you as much as you thought you would, you know, say, for example, right now, if we got rid of it, that doesn't mean we'd have $818,000 more right now. There would be some costs and some less, there would be fewer revenue coming in, too, because people were not on that plan paying up for that plan. So again, I'm going to sit down with Lockton. We're going to run some scenarios. It may be a situation that if we keep it, you know, employees may have to pay more to keep that. And that may be a way that we keep it as an option, or we may look at it and says it just doesn't make sense to be able to keep it anymore. And like Gabe said, that's not widely, widely offered from other districts right now. So I think that is it for the financials right now. So I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody might have.
Do you think the Lockton, the EPO conversation is going to happen next month, or?
There, we're either going to come to you in February or March for you to renew, for you to vote on. That will be clear at that time. I had thought we might go February, but now since I need to have a few more of these conversations, I think I'd like a little more time to break this down with them and digest that a little bit. So, so you, Lockton will either be here in February or March to present your renewal also.
Okay.
But insurance is probably going to go up about 8.5% next year.
And where, nevermind.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay, if there are no additional questions, is there a motion for approval? Thank you, Rick. Is there a second?
I'll second.
No, I do have a question. Okay. So, sorry, I wasn't going to do it, but I can begin. Okay. When, so we added, so we changed teacher contracts, we changed some of that, and then we talked about, how was that? Are we going to include some of those things that we've talked about before in the budget? Remember when I talked to you about?
I'm going to need more-
I'm going to clarify. I'm going to, I'm going to do this later. I'm going to do it later.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion and I have a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Chesney.
Yes.
Mr. Garing.
Yes.
Ms. Lanning.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
And the motion passes? Six to zero. Personnel report, Dr. Cross?
Hey, good evening. I left this up in the report at your stations. There is one small change on the personnel report I want to bring to your attention. It's under woman number four, number three. The individual on that line- The individual on that line says that they're going to work both at Carden Park and Hosea. After this was submitted, we were told that they will not work at Carden Park, but they are still going to be employed full-time and will be working only at Hosea as compared to splitting between Carden Park and Hosea as it indicates. Other than that, I don't believe there are any changes. Did anyone have any questions? If not, I'd ask that you would submit them or approve them as amended.
Is there a motion for approval? Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Mr. Garing?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Six to zero. Dr. Kraus?
Okay, the next item is the AEL job descriptions. You saw the, the four of these last month. Couple of them are new positions and a couple of them are revised to better meet the actual job qualifications that these folks are doing. There is no financial cost to the district as everything under, that would be hired under these job descriptions is a part of the AEL grant. Are there any questions?
Make a motion approved.
I'll second.
Is there a motion? A second? If there are no questions, would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Mr. Garing?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
The motion passes? Six to zero.
All right, the next item was the subfinder services. We sent out an RFP. We had five vendors that submitted bids. Edgestaff is the incumbent. They came in the lowest at twenty-five percent, ranging all the way up to twenty-eight percent. In the world of subfinding, one percent equates to about fifteen thousand dollars. So based on the second highest bid, Edgestaff's fifteen thousand lower and about forty-five thousand dollars lower compared to the highest bid. Jenny Powers and I reviewed them all very carefully. And we talked to our attorney if there was a requirement to have interviews for these firms. We're very happy with the services Edgestaff provides. And since they were the lowest, we were told we did not need to interview. And so we are making our recommendation that we go enter into a one-year contract with Edgestaff for our subfinder services. Any questions from anyone?
If there are no questions, is there a motion for approval?
My move.
Thank you, Kim. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mike. Would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Mr. Garing?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Six to zero. Are you next, Dr. Kraus?
I am next again, yes. We'd like the board to consider allowing us to send out an RFP for debt collection services. Currently, we have about twenty-five thousand dollars in debt from various sources, but from past employees. We have tried conventional means to recoup that money. Obviously, since it's taxpayer money, we feel like we need to make every effort we can to recover it. So if, if you vote to approve this, this would allow us to send out an RFP to anyone who might be interested in submitting. And then the next step would be to bring those results back to the board to see if you're interested in actually engaging a vendor to do that service for us.
It may be too early in the game, Dr. Kraus, but are these typically year, like yearly contracts or you revisit them next year?
Yes.
Just.
Normally, well, we can write the contract however we, we would. I would certainly suggest a one-year, since it's new to the district especially.
Can you mention the types of outstanding payments that we would be looking to recoup?
The main ones are from the Grow Your Own program and the Pathway to Teaching. Both of those programs involve giving the participants district money, taxpayer money on the front side to gain either their bachelor's degree and teaching certificate or an alternative certificate if they're in the pathways program. Part of the contract that they sign is if they don't work for us for a certain amount of time, they're required to pay back a certain percentage of the money that they were given from the district. And so those are, that's where the majority of the things come. Dr. Seagres could probably give you some.
Yeah, there might be a few things where it's, where I can think of, maybe some people who have rented a facility and have not, have maybe had a check that did not make it all the way. So there could be a few things like that. There aren't a lot of those, but that, this would give us a way to try to recover some of that cost, too.
Are there any additional questions? I make a motion to approve. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Mr. Garing?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Six to zero. And Dr. Kraus?
I'm going to defer to Ms. DeVal. She is the queen of PAT, so she'll be able to.
Thank you. So I wanted to bring to you guys today, I think you saw this before on an information item. I was gone at the time, or at least in a weekly memo from Dr. Kraus, for an administrative assistant for parents as teachers. It's a part-time position, twenty-five hours on average. So we are wanting to, that position due to the fact that we have had an early childhood special education funded administrative assistant covering that role. We have not had a separate parents as teachers administrative assistant for quite a few years now. And we'd like to move back to trying to support that program on its own. We feel that there's enough work there. In fact, as we've been growing and continuing to grow, plenty of work to continue that. So we are asking for that position. And I'm sure you're going to ask how that's going to be funded. So that will be funded through the money that we receive through Parents as Teachers. We do get a four percent allocation for administrative services. But then we also get a chunk of money, it's not, it's not always the same, it varies, for resources, to use on resources. So every year it comes in. So that is how we are planning on funding that position. But we really need to keep our early childhood special education funded administrative assistant in that vein of early childhood special. So these two would collaborate together with our screenings and that process that we utilize as we funnel some kids through our early learning center and then also obviously through our Parents as Teachers services. Do you guys have any questions?
Any motion to approve? Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Mr. Garing?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And the motion passes?
Yes.
Six to zero. Hey, Mr. Hausman?
Good evening. So sidewalk improvements for Pickett and Parkway Elementary. So what I'm bringing to you tonight is the construction of new sidewalks where they do not exist across the fronts of both locations and leading up to basically the front door of the existing sidewalks that are leading to those doors. So tonight, I'm asking for the motion to approve LaHawn Construction as the general contractor for the construction and sidewalk improvements at both Pickett and Parkway, and the amount of the combined bid submitted for three hundred and nine thousand, two hundred dollars. This will be funded through the 2024 bond funds.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
I have one question. So this is, this is the sidewalk improvements through the bond issue. There's also sidewalk improvements through a city partnership?
That, that's the city. We are taking care of our property right now. There is a partnership possibility with the city, but the city hasn't, doesn't have all that in place yet for us. That's a much slower process than what we're doing.
So the ones that we talk, I mean, we talked about this like a year ago. And they were identified, and that still has not happened.
We are taking care of our property.
No, I know. I'm just, I, yes.
Yeah, that, that's what we're capable of doing right now. Our own side.
Gotcha, just, just checking.
I do have a question because I'm thinking Parkway there, how it's such a hill. So does it, does a sidewalk, will the sidewalk, I guess I should say, run along? You know, how you come out of Parkway and you go down that hill?
It's going to have some retaining wall.
Okay.
Yeah. It's part of, add a lot to the cost there, yeah.
Okay. And then Pickett, I guess my question is, how far out does it actually go from the school?
Our property line. Our property lines.
Okay.
Yeah. Hopefully, hopefully, once the city gets going with theirs, then we can tie in. That's, that's the long-term goal. That, that process with the city, though, is, their process is a little slower than ours.
Both locations, we're tying into existing crosswalks that they've put in in the past.
Yeah.
And then tying into basically the existing surfaces that we have that extend to the edge of the property line.
Okay.
And maybe our process, it will speed up the process of the cities a little bit. You never know. I have a motion in a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Mr. Garing?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Six to zero. Thank you, Mr. Casey. Okay, Dr. Seagres?
Yes, I have a change order. This is part of some of the fine arts upgrades from the bond project. Some of these, this is at some of the sites where we're installing kilns. We knew this might be a challenge at a few of them. There are some electrical upgrades that were needed just from a capacity standpoint. So you have a change order in front of you there from LaHawn for, for that, to complete those projects, to do those electrical upgrades. So I would ask for approval on that.
So much. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. If there are no questions, if you'd call the vote, please?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Mr. Garing?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Six to zero. Okay, Dr. Seagres?
Turf and track contracts you have approved at previous meetings, Mid-American Golf for site prep and ATG for the turf and installation. Mid-American Golf, their original bid in that that was approved was to do all of the work and provide the turf. ATG has, has indicated they would still like to do the turf and the turf installation. So it's a little bit different looking because now there's a change order from Mid-American Golf to deduct that amount. I never get a change order for less money, but this is actually a change order to take some cost off of their bid. And then ATG, their contract for the amount that was approved for them to do the turf and install. We'll see dirt moving this week. They were, they were mobilizing today for entrances and exits coming off of the facilities. So within the next few days, you should see some, some track coming up and, and some movement of dirt and everything. So we're ready for this process to roll. But I just ask that you approve the contracts here tonight.
So much. I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Are there any questions? If not, would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Mr. Garing?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And the motion passes? Six to zero. Thank you, Dr. Seagres. Okay, Dr. Kraus?
Okay, the first one, action item H, the St. Joseph Legislative Partnership. Kind of wanted to speak in terms of that first. This is a partnership between the St. Joseph School District and the Community Alliance Business Partners where we solicit information from a legislative group out of Jefferson City. They help us kind of guide where we are, are headed. The two things right now that they are talking about or assisting me specifically with is House Bill 371 and then the parental consent for modifications on the IEPs. Those are the two things that I've gathered information from them. They have weekly Friday updates. I don't know how many people participate. I have participated the last couple of Fridays. I do know that Ms. Williams, Ms. Lanning, both have been on those in the past. And then also, there's a weekly report that I send to you. The legislative priorities are probably holistically a little bit bigger than what we want to see from a public education system because it does include the city and includes the county. And the umbrella is probably larger. We receive assistance from the Greater Kansas City Consolidated School District. I've sent you stuff from them before. We receive stuff from MSBA. Robert gets a lot of good information from Mo Asbo, and I know he has forwarded that to you. So as far as this partnership is concerned, you know, I recommend that we stick with it. I mean, I, I think it's something that for a minimal expense, it's ten thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. It's five thousand, seventy-five dollars per lobbyist. And there's two of those involved.
The ten thousand isn't just to us?
Yes. So it would be, it's ten thousand, ten thousand, one fifty for every partner. It's thirty, it, it's in the contract. I think it's thirty thousand.
I thought it was thirty thousand total.
It, it's thirty thousand per lobbyist. So thirty thousand goes to, to Mark and thirty, thirty thousand goes to Trent. And at this time, I entertain any questions you guys might have in regards to that.
So I had expressed concerns about this contract. And I guess my concern comes from that we don't, I don't see us as a district using this service in the way that other partners are. So I've been on the calls, I've, I've been in meetings. I, I really like Trent and Mark. I think they do a good job with the information, but we're not using it the way the other partners are. And what I mean by that is oftentimes what I will hear happening from those Friday calls is separate legislative meetings and conversations with partners who are talking about specific bills that are talking about how we get someone from our entity to go down and testify on bills. We just don't seem to be as active with it. I know that there's been conversation, like we're still kind of grappling with how active legislatively we want to be as a district and board, I would say. But to me, if it's ten thousand dollars, in addition to all the other legislative activity that we have access to, which you've mentioned, you know, all of the state associations have information. If we're going to pay for something separate through a partnership locally, we should use it. And I just haven't seen us using it that way.
Yeah, and, and you're right. I mean, because it's not specific to public education. I mean, there's a lot of different avenues. Now, one thing that I would say in regards to that, the next district leadership is probably going to have to become a lot more active in, in legislative priorities that come down. And I say that because House Bill 371 obviously is the one in regards to open enrollment. And you're going to see a lot of edu, a lot of attacks coming on public education over the next couple of. Yeah. Well, we have seen, I mean, for the last five years, there really hasn't been a whole lot to. I mean, you could advocate for it, but at the end of the day, it, it's kind of been one of those things where you're watching a movie at the beginning and you, you're getting to the middle. And now when it gets to the end, I think you're going to have to become more active.
Yeah.
As a school district, for sure.
And that's my thing, too, is, and I, I get where there's differing opinions on how actively, how active we should be in all of the bad stuff.
Yeah.
There's a lot of it.
Yeah.
Senate Bill 727 was a great example. We didn't, we didn't write a letter, we didn't, we didn't do anything with that. To your point of, we just watched it unfold. Uh, but we pay $10,000 to be active in it. Um, and I think that should be more than just listening in. Um, and, and I'm not, I'm not just talking about legislation that's bad, because there's a lot of it. Um, but also, how can we work with our local delegation to earmark money for workforce development or early childhood, some things that they actually do seem to, um, respond to. But I just, I think if we're, I, I'm not opposed to entering into this agreement, but it's $10,000. And if all we're gonna use it for is a update, we get that from a lot of different places.
No, I agree. And so, I, I think that, um, I would enter into the agreement for '25, '26 with the intention that it will be used a lot more than what it was in the, in the past.
But I think, I think, so from my perspective, though, is, I hear what you're saying from an administrative lens, that administration needs to be more involved. But if the school board, if the Board of Education is not interested in standing up to some of this nonsense, then we're just paying $10,000 for a newsletter.
Mm-hmm.
So, I guess that's my question to the board.
And also, I would tell you that, um, you do have one of your local legislators, um, who is in a position of a lot of power this year.
Yeah.
And, but, to be honest with you, I don't, and I, I'm not saying this in a bad way, but I don't need this legislative group to build a relationship with Brenda. I mean, I would just call Brenda on the phone and say, you know, this is where I stand from that standpoint. So, yeah, I don't know if you're gonna get a whole lot of, from that. I, I get it, I totally understand what you're coming, uh, what, where you're coming from. But I, I, I do think it's a good partnership, and I would look at it as a minimal cost. I understand that you under-, you're coming at it from a $10,000 expense, and it could be spent, uh, better elsewhere. But, um, I think more than ever, the county, the city, Missouri Western, it, they're gonna need each other more and more as this, um, as the challenges come, presents themselves.
Just to clarify, that you're asking if the board ch- chooses to approve this, the board is agreeing in order to be more active, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I just think that if you're gonna pay $10,000, which I understand, in, in a $160 million budget, it's not, not much of anything. But if it's $10,000 and we're not using it to advocate against or for legislation or funding, then we're just paying $10,000 to offset the cost of the other group, people in the group that are.
They are advocating.
And we're paying $10,000 for a newsletter that we already get. So, that, so that is my question, again, not to the administration.
To the board, yeah.
To the board.
I get it. I think that's a fair, I think that's a fair question.
Do the members of the board, Rhonda, you got that look on your face? What is it?
I do, 'cause here's what I'm, I didn't even know, I don't even know when these meetings occur. So, it's very hard for me to be involved if I don't know when they occur. Um, so, having that information for me personally would be helpful. Then I could have the option to choose whether I do or I don't.
Well, and a lot of it's gonna be, it, the, the weekly Friday, um, and maybe I did, maybe that's my fault. Maybe I didn't communicate those, but it's Friday at 11:00.
Okay.
But as far as the opportunities for you to participate, it's gonna be like Northwest Days. It's gonna be those times where you're gonna have to take advantage of the opportunity of being in Jefferson City, not to just to be in Jeff City. And, uh, Trent and Mark are both, uh, and, and these two know this because they've dealt with them in the past. They're very, uh, affluent at what they do, they're very powerful as far as lobbyists are concerned. I would say they're two of the best in the state of Missouri. And, uh, I understand where Whitney's coming from. We don't use them like they should be used.
Correct.
But they're not opposed for us to use them like they should be used either.
Right. And, and that's, again, that's why I go back to the board. If we want to be involved, we're one of the largest districts in the state. If we want to be involved and we want to pay for this, then we need to use it. So, Great Northwest Days is a great example. I'm so glad you brought it up. It's next week, and we have had no legislative conversations about what we're doing and how we're doing it. I mean, I know we're scheduling meetings, but as far as the strategy of what we specifically want to ask for, other than, please don't hurt us anymore, um, that, that is my, that's what I'm putting out there. I'll vote for it, but I'd like to see us use it.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Any questions? Can you normally email out the link, right?
Uh, the phone number?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I can, uh.
We have it on a recurring email.
Email.
At one point, uh, last year, we did.
Mm-hmm.
It's not this year, okay. We'll get, I'll have Cassie get that set up.
Okay.
Thank you. If there are no more questions, is there a motion?
I'll make it.
Thank you, Rick. Is there a second? Thank you, Kim. Call the vote, please.
Motion to continue the partnership? Ms. Rick and Kim?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
And Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And the motion passes, six to zero?
Okay, and the next thing is the, uh, partnership with the Community Alliance. You'll see that there are, um, nine partners, the Chamber, the city, um, CBB, the county, Mosaic, Missouri Western, the school district, and United Way. Uh, there are two of the partners that pay less. Uh, it's a $20,000 commitment to us. Um, I believe it's United Way and CBB, uh, that pay $10,000 apiece. Now, one thing that I, that I would go back to, and I would say in regards to this, is that, you know, this truly is a partnership, and I, I really think that, um, right now, with the leadership that is involved in each one of those organizations, um, the, in order for St. Joseph to be successful, um, we really have to focus on the St. Joseph School District being the center of the community. And, you know, I've said that in all three of my years as superintendent of schools, I firmly believe that. And until that happens, you can't fix, we cannot fix St. Joe Public School District by having meetings once a month and by, um, you know, the administrators doing their day-to-day jobs. Uh, we're in a position, or we're in a place, that we need the city of St. Joseph, we need the county, we need Missouri Western, we need Mosaic. We need those votes in order to be successful, in my opinion. So, I think this is a crucial piece or a crucial partnership that needs to continue.
Can you? I have a motion. I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion, a second?
Can you talk about what the cost goes to?
Um, the $20,000.
Yeah.
Uh, would pay, uh, part of it would pay the director's salary. Um, I do know that. I, I do have a speci-, I don't have it in front of me, but I have a budget, and I could give you the broken, the broken-down pieces of that.
The director's alliance? If you have a question?
Oh, yeah, Tom, there you. Uh, that's what, the biggest portion of it goes to the director's salary. And then, there are some, some other expenses that we have.
And so, right now, um, so what I've seen from the Community Alliance is a weekly email.
Um, yes, that comes from, uh, Tom and himself, and that we actually have a Community Alliance meeting tomorrow. And we really have, um, changed the, uh, focus. I am the, I guess, the liaison or the leader of the Community Alliance right now. Will be through, uh, June. And, um, the, um, agenda items, uh, we're really trying to, uh, focus on the betterment of some of those things. I wa-, I can tell you that, uh, last month, two months ago, we actually talked about, um, how we consist some of the cultural, cultural issues that we're facing. And they really, um, kind of stepped up to the plate with some ideas. Now, I will tell you this, too, um, we have to figure out how to put some of that stuff in motion and not just talk about it. But we are guilty of that in the St. Joe Public School District as well. And I, I think it's time to, um, it's time for action in a lot of those different areas. But I will tell you, the conversations have been better the last six months than they were previously.
Is there any, what's, so what's the big goal, or?
Well, I think, um, 2040 is still, obviously, a, uh, it's something that is a, um, a goal of the Community Alliance. And, um, we have, uh, charged Tom with changing or presenting information on that, and that's coming up here pretty quick, right? Um, and so, but there are a lot of different priorities, and I think that, uh, the school district, if you ask them, I think that, um, the school district is probably the number-one priority of the Community Alliance. And, um, this is a place, too, I think, where the Board of Education can get, can get more involved.
How can the Board of Education get more involved?
So, they understand what your priorities are, you know? I mean, I can, I communicate those, they understand, they know where I'm coming from. But I, I, you know, I think board representation would be good at that as well.
Well, um, I know that I was attending the meetings last year.
Mm-hmm.
And I never received an invite this year.
And I think that probably just had to do with the, um, with the change in, in leadership of that position. And you have been invited the last couple of months, though, right? No? Okay.
I think this, so I'll, I'll be honest with you, I'm gonna put no on this. But I think that, that goes back to, my reason for that is, when we're spending money on something and we don't have some sort of tangible goal or outcome that we're getting from it, it seems like we're paying in for networking, which we can do anyway, or for less than that cost.
Mm-hmm.
But that's just, it's just my two cents.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments about this?
Okay, um, we have a motion. And, well, I have a question, I have a question. Okay, so, like, do you think that this, it's, it's improved for the district in this past year, then?
Well, I think that, um, I think they've really listened to the district. Not that it didn't happen before, but, uh, I think that people are understanding, uh, the real challenges that the St. Joe Public School District faces.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's a lot of myths out there, and people don't understand what we deal with on an everyday basis. And, um, if you don't let folks in the community know that, then they're gonna build their own narrative.
Right.
And I think in order for us to be successful, we have to control that narrative. And I think the Community Alliance is a, a good place to control that narrative.
And I think that, you know, and I'll be the first to admit, I harbor some feelings, um, you know, last February, when we were talking about the, the four-day week, and, and the chamber came and spoke publicly against that, I guess, what I would like to see or hear that is happening is that as we're talking about things moving forward, as we're talking about the long-range plan, that if that group or members of that group oppose, that they propose. It often feels like we are trying to hit an invisible target. Um, I know, even with the long-range plan and some of the bond issues, the questions that we've gotten of, you know, well, we want to see this, that, and the other. And I, when I've asked, like, well, well, what are the stipulations for the Community Alliance or stakeholders to approve this plan? And nothing really comes back. So, I guess my, my hope would be, moving forward, and I guess I'll stop looking at you. My hope would be, moving forward, that we have more, um, back and forth of, you know, if you do oppose this from the school district, something that we're putting together, or if we say, this is what's best for kids, and this is what we need to do. If that's opposed by these stakeholders, um, that they'll give us that information so we can not get to the end and then just say, no, we didn't, we didn't like it.
Mm-hmm.
So, I guess I just would like to see some more of that.
Yeah.
Collaboration and support, pretty much.
Yeah.
Not just, I'm gonna listen, oh, no, I don't like this.
Yeah, and, and, you know, the feeling. We, we constantly get like the, if this, if this school district's better, everything would be solved in the, in the town. The worst thing about the town is the school district, which I completely disagree with. Um, but I think being able to see some of that, if, if, if that really is true, seeing those stakeholders say, here's what we can get.
Uh-huh.
Here's what we can do. And I know that there are some businesses in town, Altech is absolutely one of them, that does a great job. Um, but just seeing more of that, I don't know, I guess, transactional.
Yeah, no, and I, and I agree, and I think that, um, the school district's in a position, or, I, I agree with you first. I'm gonna tell you, it, the school district is not the biggest problem in this, in this community.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Now, I would tell you this, um, you know, we have, we pres-, we are presented with a lot of different challenges, and the Community Alliance can assist us with, uh, proposing ideas to fix those challenges. And that's where.
Yeah.
I think that's where it needs to be, that's the umbrella that needs to be under. And we're in a position right now, everybody's obviously listening to this. Um, there, if you went to them right now, not one of them is gonna tell you that that's not the number-one priority for them.
Well, and, and, but I thi-, what I see a lot, what I, what I observe happen is that we say that, but then the follow-up to that.
Yeah, I, I agree, yeah.
Great conversation. Is there anything else from anybody?
And, and one, I, I would say one last thing, and, and you just said it. I mean, this is a good conversation. I need to understand exactly what the Board of Education wants from the Community Alliance because it is a partnership to me, it is a networking piece, that's what I'm good at, you guys know that. But, um, I have to understand, and it might be part of the, you know, when we talk about superintendent evaluation later on, those are the types of things that need to be known so somebody has a goal or something that they can, they can get to that point. And, uh, what is it exactly that, that the board wants from them? And I think I understand that now. You know, I've never, we've never had this conversation, so I appreciate it.
Well, we have.
Well, I know.
But go ahead.
Yeah.
So, is it possible that, that, um, a board member, board member, maybe steps up and says, okay, I want to commit my time to this, and then a board member goes to the meeting as well? I mean, that's purely a question.
I'm supposed to be going to the meetings.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's always.
And of course, I'll be glad. It's always the president of the board, and I'll be glad to continue to do that. Yeah.
Tomorrow at 2:30.
I will be there, email me at the agenda. I'll have lots to say.
Got it.
So, so then I have a question from that. Is there some way that once you've been there, that we kind of know?
Yep.
What, okay.
Yep, I'll be able to give a report.
Okay.
Well, and even if, you know, as, as members that are paying 20 grand, if we could get the minutes that have, I mean, 'cause even if you had the minutes sent back out, you could see, okay, here's what their agenda was.
We'll just talk about it.
Yeah, like, here's some things, I mean, something.
Are we able to get those two to give?
Yeah.
Because I, I do think that it's also really helpful, this group, when you're all ta-, many of you are taxing bodies. We all know who's putting a tax win, um, so we're not, you know, fighting over that, those types of things. It'd be nice to know.
Yeah.
Is it the last Tuesday of every Monday?
Well, we just moved it back to that, and, and it, we, we were kind of all over the place there for a while. And, uh, we just moved it back to the, yes, the 2:30 before the chamber meeting.
Okay. Perfect. And I'll be at the chamber meeting. That makes sense. Okay? Good conversation. I have a motion, a second. If there's nothing else, would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning? Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And the motion passes, five to one.
Okay.
April ballot language.
April 2000 ballot language. Okay, so, let's, uh, we're gonna kind of set the tone for this, right? So, this is gonna kind of be three parts for you tonight. Uh, the first part, uh, Mr. Gresher and DLR, uh, they're gonna come up, um, along with Terry, and they're gonna talk about how we got to $157 million, okay? So, I would expect you to ask any questions that you might have in regards to the $157 million. And then, we'll bring, uh, Neil and John up to the stage from LJ Hart. They're gonna talk about the recommendation that they would have, uh, for you to put yourself in a fiscally responsible position, uh, to set this thing forward. And then, uh, we'll talk a little bit about the ballot language. I will present the ballot language to you, and then I'll ask you for a recommendation to put the ballot, or to put the information on the April ballot, uh, which is due tomorrow, by the way. So, Kevin, I'll turn it over to you guys first and explain to us how we got to $157 million.
Okay. So, um, after our last meeting two weeks ago, um, we went back immediately and started the process, um, taking into consideration, um, your comments regarding, uh, what should be in this new high school, and specifically, um, the 700-student, uh, Performing Arts Center. So, if you look at the, the aerial view of, of this, you're gonna see over on the left-hand side, um, a 700-student Performing Arts Center. Uh, the combination of that, uh, also reducing, and before I get started, I'd better go ahead and, and introduce my team that's here. Megan Masterson, Terry Clark, and Aaron are here from Creole Clark, so. Um, but, uh, all of us together, along with Navoltz Construction, uh, and working with the administrators, talking about some of the, uh, amenities, as well as, uh, how those would be. uh, and working with the administrators, talking about some of the, uh, amenities, as well as, uh, how those would be used. So, so we reduced some of the parking, we had eight-hundred-and-some parking stalls. Uh, we, uh, looked at Central, uh, we also looked at some of our other high schools that we've done. Uh, we have reduced the parking down to five-hundred-and-seventy-five, but we do have area for growth. If that is needed over time, there's a place where we could just add, uh, parking, um, in, in this, uh, in this plan, particular plan. Um, we did reduce the seating for the football, uh, kind of that, we were just trying to find a, the happy medium between, uh, all of these, uh, events. Um, we do have, uh, fifteen hun, we have two thousand seats, fifteen-hundred seats in the home and five hundred seats in the away, or visitors. Uh, and then we, uh, also reduced some of the hard person, uh, impervious areas for parking at, uh, baseball and softball. And we will just have, uh, gravel parking lots there, but enough for sixty cars. So, uh, and all the other things that we had discussed earlier. So in doing that, um, if you remember, we were right at a hundred and fifty million dollars, um, with, uh, not using the P, PAC, with, uh, uh, putting the PAC back in and doing some of the other things, we ended up around a hundred and fifty-seven million dollars. So, um, so this is an aerial view of, or rendering of, of the high school and all the amenities on the site. Uh, this is a daytime view. Nighttime view, little harder to see, but just to give you a sense of what, what Friday night might look like at the high school, where you have all your entries to all the different, uh, events that might go on at one, at one time on a Friday night. And then, uh, this is just the, because of the topography of all the sites that we have been looking at, this happens to be just the backside of the, of the high school, um, where it does step down the hill, and it is, um, really, uh, it, there are three stories, but in reality, it's, uh, two stories of, of building, um, with, uh, kind of a walkout on the backside. So you can see the football field off to the right-hand side and, and the fire, uh, lane around the building, as well as, uh, commons area, um, out towards the, the more, uh, green part of the site. And we just wanted to give you a sense, this is, this is, uh, trying not to create great architecture, because, uh, at this point in time, we haven't worked a lot with the design, but it just gives you a sense of walking into the building, you'd be able to have that. It's more about the architecture and creating, uh, a common space between all of the event spaces. I mean, it's the basketball court on the left-hand side, this is all pre-function space, it's common space during the day. It's places where kids can see and be seen, and, and that connection to the outside also. So, um, in this presentation, we do have the, the, uh, total budget that we went through and worked through, and, and you can see at the bottom, that's a hundred and fifty-six million, a little over a hundred and fifty-six, uh, point-five million dollars. Any questions about how we got there? We feel comfortable, we've, we've tested this against, uh, some of our most recent projects, and, uh, Navoltz Construction feels comfortable that we are at two-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand square feet, almost two-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand square feet, um, and that, uh, that where we're at, we're in good shape. Questions?
You guys did a great job.
Well.
I mean, it had a lot of time, and we were kinda picky, so.
Well, thank you. We had a lot of good feedback from everybody, so I think it was important. Uh, we started out early, um, I think we all wish we would've been at a hundred and fifty, but, um, I think all the amenities, and this is a truly, uh, um, a great high school for the state of Missouri.
Covered a lot of ground this week.
We did, we did cover a lot of ground, so. Well, I'll let the numberless guys talk to you now.
Yeah, it's easy to be like, yeah, we won.
Yeah.
Neil's gonna tell us how we can.
Now the hard, now the hard part starts. Hey.
Don't let us down, Neil.
Yeah, I know. I love, I love the pressure. Um, I don't have any great renderings or drawings, but I do have a handout at everybody's station there. Um, I guess refresher back to the, the work session a couple of weeks ago. Um, i- in doing the hundred and fifty million, and actually now a hundred and fifty-seven million is what we have, um, w- we were projecting that at a, at the one-point-two-five percent growth in assessed valuation, and then with the Board's, uh, feedback, wanted to look at one-point-seven-five percent growth, as well as two-and-a-quarter percent growth. And again, just as we're looking at it, the, the district has grown at two-point-four-two percent on average the last five years. So, still below what you've grown at. Uh, I think that's kind of important to, to set the stage there, because we're not, you know, we're not being overly aggressive on, on what we're looking at here still. So, when I looked at it, uh, sixty cents back last, uh, uh, last meeting was about a hundred and fifteen million is what we were looking at being able to do. So you add in the hundred and fifty-seven million, so again, splitting up into three, fifty, fifty, and fifty-seven, again, those are arbitrary numbers, it just gets us to a hundred and fifty-seven million. However those three go, that's, that's fine, we'll look at the construction draws and things like that to figure out what we wanna do and when we wanna do, uh, each amount. So with those, looking at a sixty-cent increase, so a, a total of a dollar thirteen in debt service, gets us, uh, to in twenty thirty-three, a, a hundred and eleven million is the, uh, is the new, uh, bonding capacity, and then a hundred and ten would be what we would be able to do at that point in time without raising the levy.
Wait, can you start, can you show me?
That's the first set of rows here. Looking at, that's, uh, one-and-a-quarter percent growth in assessed valuation, so again, being conservative.
Oh, okay, so twenty thirty's on here, so I should stop looking for it.
What's that?
The number twenty thirty.
These are off to twenty thirty.
All, gotcha.
Twenty thirty-three.
Twenty thirty-three is the, is the bonding capacity, yes.
Yes.
Sorry.
Gotcha.
So doing that, uh, a hundred and fifty-seven million, one-and-a-quarter percent growth gets you out to a hundred and eleven million of legal bonding capacity in twenty thirty-three. The next set of rows is if we, if we grow at a, at one-point-seven-five percent in assessed valuation, again, leaving those financing amounts the same, keeping the, the levy the same, just, just changing the growth assumption, a hundred and twenty-two million four eighty-eight is your bonding capacity out in twenty thirty-three. If you then look at that last set of rows, two-and-a-quarter percent, again, still lower than what you've grown at, that would be a hundred and thirty-four million roughly at that, at that point in time that you'd be able to do. Again, all of those three options, with those growth assumptions, that's not raising the levy at that time. It's keeping it at the dollar thirteen, the sixty-cent increase right now puts you in that position, you know, eight years down the road.
Neil, can you explain, um, so, r- right now, it, it's showing April of two thousand thirty-three?
Yeah.
So let's, let's look at it from April of two thousand thirty-two, let's just back it up one year. Can you explain to them, um, some of the prepayments that we have done since two thousand eighteen to, that would help get that, put them in that position to knock that down to two thousand thirty-two or two thousand thirty-one?
Yeah, and really, the whole, the point, the point to this was, I was just trying to get to, close to what the number is right now.
I get it.
So, um, in the last six years, we've done a prepayment every single summer for the, the debt service fund levy. It's because we've, we've always assumed one percent growth in assessed valuation, you've grown at two-point-four. So when you grow more rapidly than what we're expecting, you have to pay off, uh, some principal in your debt service fund, or you have to lower your levy, one of those two. So the district, every year for the last six years, has decided to prepay, reduce their, the, the debt burden, but keep the levy at fifty-three cents. So if you grow more than what we're anticipating, the same thing happens, your debt service fund balance shoots upward, you have to then prepay, and again, when you do prepay, you shorten debt or you restructure that debt to be more friendly to a future bond issue. So we're looking at this from growing at either one of these three growths in assessed valuation. If you grow more than that, there is obviously the, the chance to prepay and shorten the timeframe of when you could do that, that next bond issue. Because when you pay off that principal, you are building back your bonding capacity slowly and slowly, but quicker than what is actually scheduled, if that makes sense.
And I just wanted you guys to understand that that's common, you know, we've, we've done that, like he said, the last six years. Um, and I would anticipate you're gonna be in a position, uh, to continue to do that. So he has to present that information at two thousand thirty-three, but, uh, there is an opportunity for get, to get you to two thousand thirty-two or two thousand thirty-one by.
So.
And you just have to make sure that you stay ahead of the game and be, be on that. I mean, that's, that's something that they, uh, will help you with as well as, as you move forward.
So if, if we're able, so construction we're talking about, if, if everything passes and we start to build, what did we project that would be the first school year that the first one would open?
Fall of twenty-eight.
Fall of twenty-eight.
Yeah, so then if you got to thirty-two, then you would just be, that's pretty much what we had talked about in the past, it would be four years, it would be six years from when it passed, it would be four years, that's kinda what we have said to the public. So you're right in that right range, uh, with this proposal.
So, so we're thinking then, okay, so, uh, thank you for all this.
Yes.
And I, let me make sure I under, I understand the journey. Um, last time you presented a few different possible asks for levy increase, and, uh, I think we indicated we like the middle option, which is that's, this is sixty cents.
Sixty cents.
So every one of these, and what you've done here is what we asked you to do, which is, hey, take a look at what the numbers look like, should we grow more than our conservative estimate?
Yeah.
Based on the fact that we have.
Mm-hmm. And I guess I'll point out, on the last one we did, we added that seventy-five cent increase to get you to a dollar twenty-eight. That was at a hun, and growing at one-point-two-five percent?
Yeah.
Just to compare, that was just at a hundred and thirty-nine million. So adding in seven million and growing at two and, two, two-and-a-quarter percent, you're almost back to that, that, that same spot.
Okay.
So that, that growth assumption being, I guess, overly conservative?
Yeah.
Uh, kinda puts you in the same spot as it, as if you're growing about where you're at right now.
All right.
Okay. Sixty cents per seventy-five, yeah.
And then let me, help me interpret that number, so let's take the middle scenario where in two thousand twenty-three, if that, if those numbers came, if the assessed valuation growth wa, wa, was that number?
Yep.
Um, we would end up with a hundred and twenty-two million bonding capacity.
Yeah.
And that's money we could borrow to build a second school. We could, we could borrow that much without having to ask for a tax increase at that time.
Yeah, and you always, I mean, for us, we always back it off, just a couple million.
Yeah.
There's, it provides a little cushion, 'cause we're assuming like sixteen million in, in balances. So just in case it's not sixteen million, we always wanna go a little bit lower. But there are, you know, there is alternative funding there, like as far as a lease financing that could make up the rest of.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you know, obviously we're at a hundred and fifty-seven now, my guess is it's not gonna get cheaper.
Pro- probably not. I'm not an expert on that, you can ask this guy, but I don't think it's going to get any cheaper.
Uh, but yeah, yeah, I mean, uh, the point is, it honors what the Board wants, is to set the course for two new high schools, and, uh, do it with an ask that is re- reasonable, sets us up for the second school.
Yeah.
And, and, um, has at least a good chance of not having to go back for a, a large tax increase at that time.
Yes.
Twenty thirty-three, twenty thirty-two, what, whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that was, yes, that was our goal, was to get it to where it's reasonable enough to ask for and get approved now.
Yeah.
But it's not too, not too aggressive as far as the burden to the taxpayer, but still setting you up.
No, correct.
For the next one.
Correct.
Just for your reference, too, Katie, what was our three-point-one this year? Our AV growth?
Yep.
Three-point-one this year.
So these are all pretty conservative growth rates?
Yes.
And if, if you would have that three percent in year one, for example, that's gonna, that's gonna front-budge you a little bit too. Yeah.
And it is reassessment, so.
Yeah.
Usually, you tend to grow a little more in reassessment than not reassessment.
And if you're in a position to where it is three-point-one in the first year, you can make a prepayment in, in September and March. There, there's several years that we've actually made two prepayments, which even puts you in a better position.
Okay, and so just so I understand, what would happen in two thousand thirty-three? That would be the launch, the money, the bond, and then we would be looking at probably another three years, to, to, to actually open the doors on the second school.
Probably.
So what, what we, what we're setting the course for is a new, uh, first new high school, opening the fall of twenty-eight, and a second new high school, maybe the fall of thirty-five, thirty-six.
Thirty-five, thirty-six. Yeah.
Okay.
We're seeing a potential two, right?
Yeah.
We can pay it off faster, okay.
Yeah.
I like that though, it's like, it really is a long range.
Yeah, I think that's a conservative way to put it, though, I mean, I mean, it's something we won't have to, uh, backpedal on.
Right.
And Katie, just correct me, three-point-seven-one last year was our AV.
Yeah, and, and, Kate, to your point, you, as far as this year doing a prepayment, if you pass it, what we would do at this point, because we're still issuing bonds, would be to push up principal within this structure to pay it off quicker. So we probably wouldn't be prepaying then at the first two or three years while we're still issuing it.
Sure.
We would structure those finances to kinda take care of that while, while we're growing and while we still have the bonds to issue, but it's after that point we would kinda start to look to prepay, yeah.
Neil, if you did some prepay on the twenty million current that we have, would that also push that number up as well?
Yeah, yeah, it would. And that, and the only thing with that one is it is a short financing. So to get to that point, you know, you'd have to get it pretty, pretty quick here. Any other questions?
Good, thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you for making it so understandable.
Okay, the last piece then is the, uh, ballot language, so if you would turn, I guess it's, uh, the third page of the document, uh, there is a resolution calling for a special, uh, school bond election to be held on April eighth, two thousand twenty-five. As you can see there, um, we used, we had them plug in Proposition Kids, uh, Latonia.
It's already being used.
What's that?
It's already in use.
It's already in use?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we have some other options.
And then after we thought about it, a member of the Board actually, actually kinda mentioned that that didn't really look so good, so.
So there are other options, and she'll, I'll read those to you here in just a second. But as you can see, the, the hundred and fifty-seven million is, uh, built into, uh, this ballot language. As of right now, um, the US, uh, south of US thirty-six, I did have a couple of Board members reach out to me and ask if we could say south of thirty-six and west of twenty-nine, and I'm totally good with that. The reason why I didn't put that in there is because, uh, I had already sent the information out. So that, that, that's totally up to you. And then the sixty cents, and that's kinda why we built the platform like we did with the presentations we had tonight. So now, um, I guess you need to discuss what you wanna call the proposition, and then also whether you wanna add, uh, west of one, one-twenty-nine, or I-twenty-nine, and then if there's anything else.
Yeah, I, I would just comment, you know, we, we, we felt, I think, as a Board, that it's important to give the best indication we can on where we intend to build this first school. And I know that that's not, uh, a hundred percent agreed upon, right? Because it does somewhat, uh, commit us to that. But, um, you know, to find this big a chunk of ground is not easy, right? And that's why we have this discussion. But, uh, to me, that language, uh, south of thirty-six and west of twenty-nine, uh, represents what this, my understanding of what the Board would like to do. And so, um, I could support the amended language to, to, to add that west of twenty-nine.
One thing that I worry about with west of twenty-nine, I just worry that it would box us in.
Yeah.
Like, just so specifically, that if there was something in. Like, just so specifically, that if there was something, and I don't know what that would look like, but if there was even a part of the parcel, you know what I mean? Like, if you had a parcel and even part of it was on the other side, would that be problematic per the language? That's that's my only thing. I am agreeable to the south of thirty-six.
I think I think the issue is that the board truly wants everyone to know it's not like a bait and a switch.
It's not that they're only telling everyone that they're going to build it in an area of town. And then it ends up like on Pickett and Woodbine or crazy things like that. No, it is our intention in order to build in an area of town. And so whatever you guys are in agreement with on the language, I am also okay with it, okay, but I also agree with you saying it's going to, like, we don't want to just to limit ourselves. And then if we're not able to do it, it's like the board's lying and they only lied in order to get us to agree with it, you know, so. I don't know. What do you think, Rick?
Um, I lean I lean towards adding the verbiage west of I twenty-nine.
What happens if, so what happens if?
It's not west of I twenty-nine?
Well, yeah, what if what if we found, what if we find something and it's south of thirty-six but not west of twenty-nine? Or conversely, it's one, you know, an inch north of thirty-six, you know, I I that's that's the only thing that I worry about. I I I like that we're being clear about we're looking at two new high schools, first of which is going to be in the south of town. When we say the south of town, we don't mean Rennick here, you know, I don't, I don't know. But I just worry about the like the legal ramifications if we can't. So what so what would happen? If we pass this and then we say, okay, there's not, you know, because there's land, but there have to be people that are willing to let go of that land for a reasonable a reasonable amount. So if we can't find that and this passes and we can't find anybody that's willing to sell to us, what happens?
That that would be a question that we'd have to ask the attorney. And and I don't know, Neil, you guys, um, write this ballot language all the time. Can you say with concentration of south of thirty-six? Is there any verbiage that you've seen that would that would, um?
Yeah, John was just saying if it's a preference, but I would say if if you're gonna, if you're questioning it, I I I would stay away from boxing yourself in. I guess as a board, if that's the decision. Obviously, you want to be clear with where you want to put it. But i- if you do think you're limited on space and and where that's going to be, I I would stay away from boxing yourself in, I guess.
You know, we'd we'd hope to have ground identified. It just hasn't happened.
Right, yeah.
And I say not just identified, but.
Agreed upon.
Correct.
Yeah.
And and that's my point is that I I guess for me, I'm agreeable to boxing ourselves into south of thirty-six. I just really worry when we start bringing that down. And and I guess the question then becomes, if we can't find any land within that box, but we find something, again, just slightly around that, then do we have to go back to snow high school? I just, I worry.
Yeah, you know, I think the board intent was that some of the properties that are available are so far east.
Yeah, that it's.
And and so far so far removed from, I say available. I shouldn't say that. I should say some of the ground that's possibilities.
Right.
Big enough. Um, there's it's so far east, they're so far east that it's so far away from the population and the students. And it just doesn't make sense. And so that's that's how the board got to that intent, I think. But I but I hear you. Great points. I don't I don't want to kill it.
And then I want the people, you know, to know our intent. It was always to build first in this area of town. Like, I do understand, you know, being extra cautious and everything else, you know. Only I want to also keep our word to the community.
Okay, south of thirty-six it is.
Yeah, it's just, it's kind of a chicken and an egg thing to me, right? Like, this has to, like, in my mind, like, I'm so passionate about wanting this to pass. And I'm just scared, I just know, I know how talk is, and I know, well, they'll just put it wherever they want to. And and so I'm scared that that is going to turn some people off because they're not going to trust us. But I absolutely see what you're saying, too. You don't want to box yourself in. I mean, it's just.
I I love.
But at the end of the day, like this, we really need this to pass, so.
And then also, if we could, like, give out a list of the actual address and let people look at the plans and the negotiations, and they're still not ever going to trust us.
Yeah.
Like.
And 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 those folks are going to say what they want to say, uh, no matter what. And one thing that I would tell you is just by having this conversation that you're having right now, if somebody couldn't watch this and understand what your intent really is.
Well, they don't want, then they don't want to.
Then they don't want to.
Yeah.
Right? So I understand your intent, and I'm pretty sure everybody in that crowd right now understands your intent. But they also understand that you don't want to box yourself in to put yourself in a legal situation.
Like, I think you run the risk of you have the approval to issue bonds, but you have a property that meets what the approval is. So you you maybe have gotten approval to go borrow the money. But until you get a site that fits that, you can't borrow the money. So maybe it eventually happens, but maybe it delays your high school by one or two years.
Yeah.
Also, I mean, I I think that's the other piece that, you know, I think just to put out there is the ballot.
Well, and I I think it's very easy for people to say, oh, you could build it here, you could build it there, you could build, all these options. Like, well, you have to have people willing, not just willing to sell, but willing to sell at a responsible price for taxpayer dollars. So to me, I feel like even even putting it south of thirty-six, I think it locks us in legally. And it shows what we're trying to do. I think this conversation, we've shown that where we want it.
Take thirty-six out?
No, I'd leave thirty-six in.
I think it becomes our.
You scared me enough that I.
No.
You woke up over there.
Yeah, I was like, I was like, oh, maybe.
I know.
I I I'm, look, I'm really glad we have a discussion about the intent because, um, you know, um, I've heard some feedback that we've been pretty quiet. And the reason is because we wanted to have this nailed down with the real estate as best we could. And we had hoped, um, that 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 would that would resolve itself. Um, it hasn't. It's still important to move forward. Um, it hasn't completely. We're making progress, but but, um.
Good progress.
Yeah, yeah. And so it's good good to have these discussions. And at the end of the day, um, it is somewhat of a matter of trust. You know, and the desire of the community, are we ready to move, uh, forward with the long-range plan?
And I feel like we have an obligation to the community to educate them on what we know and what what I personally have learned, how much land it takes to build a new school. And some of the facts that that we have learned, that I never built a school. And so I think we have a responsibility to educate them on what we have learned about how to build a school. And then in turn, hopefully, that builds trust, that you can't just build a school on a couple acres. You know, it has to be on so many acres. And if this is the plan we want, it takes this many. So we have an an obligation to to educate them and build that trust by building relationships with people in the community.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
So having having heard all of that.
I'm gonna roll it back real, real quick, though, to the name.
Oh, yeah.
It was mentioned earlier, proposition two for two high schools.
Okay.
Are you guys okay with that?
Now, can you use the same ones that you've used in the past?
Yes, you can.
Because we didn't we just use two in tw- in twenty-four? Yeah, it was that, you're right.
Ask many of proposition.
Yes.
Uh, St. Joe's Schoolers.
We had Proposition Reed, we had, uh.
You can have any number of letters.
Proprise, pro- progress.
I like two, that's fine.
You're thinking T W, you're thinking T W.
St. Joseph's Schools, Reed.
Like the word T W.
Proposition two.
I think there's the number.
I was thinking two.
Proposition two was the five-year, uh, extent, uh, that was the previous five-year sunset.
Okay, I I knew we were involved in something.
That was before us.
Just keep it easiest. I mean, I will admit.
It's from nineteen.
I picked the kids because I, because in my mind, it's about the kids, but I wasn't thinking about the combination of the proposition and kids. Not really, not really the picture that we want to make, so.
So do we, so number two or the word two?
Are you just now getting a misround?
Well, when you were saying it, I I've been reading it. I'm like, oh, so when you said it, it sounds well.
Because if you have a good mind and a heart, you're not going to think that way.
Apparently, I do.
Okay, so.
Okay, I'm with you now. You're right.
Okay, now we're on proposition two. So this is what it's going to read. Proposition two, shall the Board of Education of the School District of St. Joseph, Missouri borrow money in the amount of one hundred fifty-seven million dollars for the purpose of providing funds for the site development, construction, equipping, equipping and furnishing of a new high school complex that will be located south of U S thirty-six? To acquire land, to extend funds or available, complete other repairs and improvements in existing facilities at the district, issue and issue general obligation bonds for the payment thereof, resulting in the estimate increase to the debt service property tax levy of sixty cents per one hundred dollars in assessed valuation.
I have a question.
Yes.
I have a question about the improvements to the existing facilities of the district. What does that mean?
That's standard language.
Standard language.
Leftovers.
And if you have any dollars, you know, let's say it comes in at a hundred and fifty-two million, uh, you're allowed to put those.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, I just.
It just gives you that authorization to utilize that money.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
Some motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions?
So when.
Comments or discussion?
When we've done this before, we've all had to sign this. But now that this changed, we're gonna have to sign something different.
Yeah, we'll have to get it. We'll have to have Courtney, uh, get that to us, and we'll get it till in the morning.
Yeah, we'll send it to you.
So then we're all gonna need to make ourselves available to come sign.
Well, you guys don't all need to sign that.
Yeah, they do.
Uh, no, they don't. I fill it out. Am I right?
Yeah, it should it should be.
Present absent?
President's secretary.
Okay.
Yeah, she'll fill that out.
I just go out and sign.
Oh, okay, because last year I thought, okay, nevermind.
No.
And we'll just bring it, as soon as I get it from Courtney, I'll bring it to you, Latonya. Somebody will deliver it to you.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll be, okay.
Okay. So just let just let Courtney know that what the changes were. Do you have those changes you want me to send her?
Yeah.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Are there any additional questions, comments, or concerns? All right, let's call the vote.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Chesney.
Yes.
Mr. Gary.
Yes.
Ms. Lanning.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
And the motion passes six to the committee room.
So now that we have, now that we have this officially going forward, um, can you, Dr. Edgerson, to the school board and the staff and just everyone, um, the rules around campaigning?
Yep.
In election year.
Yep, that's a good, that's a good point. That's a good idea. Yes, we'll do that tomorrow.
Thank you. Quarterly investment report. Dr. Seagres?
Yes, um, we've got that in front of you. Uh, there's a lot of numbers there, the three that I will point out to you uh, for each account, total dividend, interest, and coupons. Uh, so by investing our money this year in the operating account, uh, we were able to make one million, five hundred sixty thousand dollars, five hundred and thirty-seven and eighty-four cents. Uh, so we had a good year because interest rates have have been pretty high this year. So we tried to wisely invest that, uh, as we get all that money early in the year and then use that until we need it later in the year. Healthcare trust, uh, we have some continuous, uh, in, uh, investment there. We saw dividend, interest, and coupons of two hundred and twenty-one thousand, sixty-nine dollars and twenty-three cents for the calendar year. And then also the, uh, twenty twenty-four bond proceeds. Uh, we've invested some of that money upfront. We have to watch and make sure that we don't, uh, end up in arbitrage there, so we would have to pay money back to the IRS. We are making sure that we meet some spending deadlines to meet those guidelines, so we don't have to do that. But we've been able to, uh, see dividend, interest, and coupons of five hundred fifty-one thousand, six hundred eleven dollars and seventy-seven cents in just the six months, uh, since we've had that. That amount will become less, obviously, as we continue to spend those bond funds down. But, uh, we're trying to wisely invest our money, uh, as we have it, so that we can maximize those dollars. So take any questions anyone might have.
I appreciate this. Um, did you have a question, Mike?
I do not.
Okay, cool.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Seagres.
Thank you.
All right, the attendance report, the St. Joseph School District attendance report, um, is attached as of January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. Uh, the attendance at winter break was eighty-four point eighteen, uh, which was three point four eight percent higher than it was at two thousand twenty-three. After November eleventh, you can see that the S J S D monthly weighted proportional attendance declined sharply. And and you know that I don't like to make any excuses, but, uh, I think a lot of it was attributed to illness. Several of us or you have, uh, have been reciprocal, if you know, have been recipient recipients of that. And so, um, you understand where I'm coming from. So however, this trend seems to be reversing as a monthly attendance up, uh, to January seventeenth. It's eighty-two point eight-six. Uh, that said, there have been minimal school days in January thus far. So, uh, we look for, uh, better attendance, um, next month. At this time, I don't entertain any questions that you guys might have in regards to the attendance report.
Thank you. Talent and development?
Yes, Dr. Adams. So let me kind of kick this off, okay?
Go for it.
Um, I I think I had mentioned back in August, uh, that we had, um, created some, uh, com- committees internally. And, uh, there were five of those committees, and I said that there would be a time where, um, those committees would report out to the Board of Education. It's time. So you're gonna hear two of them tonight, uh, probably one on the Portrait of a Graduate next month. And then two more, um, in, uh, March. So, all right, appreciate it.
I have the privilege of facilitating the talent development committee. Um, I'd like to recognize the committee members that served on our team. That's Dr. Kraus, Heather Adams, Tamara Smith-Henche, Dr. Leah Richardson, and Casey Hausman, who served on the committee. Um, I just want to walk you through kind of the process. There's two documents that are attached in your board agenda. Uh, one would be the definition of St. Joe's School District's talent development. That is one document for you. And then, uh, Desi's hot-off-the-press teacher recruitment and retention playbook. So those two are linked in the board agenda for you. The process that we went through, we started beginning, uh, meeting at the beginning of September. It looks like we've met about seven times between meeting and sharing back out at superintendent's cabinet. Uh, we went through a variety of resources. Uh, we looked at some data that Dr. Kraus shared with us through, uh, our current H R department, just employee group, um, retention and, uh, recruitment, uh, data. And then we also looked at several, um, outcome reports, uh, kind of where where we felt maybe our needs were. And then we consulted some articles. And most importantly, uh, through our U V A P L E training, this document called District Transformation Conditions Resource. Um, and so this was really our anchor text. There are three conditions within this document regarding talent development. Uh, so we spent our time, uh, while we were meeting, using some instructional strategies to kind of unpack those conditions. Um, the three conditions regarding talent development in this resource are one about school leaders, two about, uh, attracting and retaining teachers, and three, developing teachers. And so through that process, uh, our goal became, uh, writing a definition or a description of what talent development means in the St. Joe's School District. And that is one of the attachments you have. Uh, so if you would just take a look at that, I could draw your attention to it. We developed, um, I don't want to read it all to you, but there are ten, um, statements there that we've. um, statements there that we feel are very crucial and critical in, um, attracting, retaining, and developing our staff. And so, uh, the first one is vision, intentionality, data-driven decisions, leadership development, transformative teaching, strategic placement, comprehensive recruitment and onboarding, ongoing professional development, account, accountability for performance, and retention strategies. Um, that, that, and you can read the, read the document for yourself, and then if I could draw your attention to Desi's recent handbook, or playbook, they call it, um, they have outlined, it's, it's, it's interesting, this was published just about the time our team was wrapping up uh, with our first goal, so, um, there's some data in there just about, uh, demonstrating the need for this playbook with the critical shortage of teachers um, that Missouri's facing, but there are eight cornerstones, um, they center around really collaborating with stakeholders and, um, campaigning and, and doing things to promote the teaching profession, um, and it, the document ends with, um, some important work around, uh, the B TAP system that we have and the M L D S, which are both mentoring, um, development programs for principals and teachers. At this time, I can entertain any questions or comments? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Adams.
Dr. Anderson?
Good evening, sorry, I really have to always adjust the microphone or you won't ever be able to hear me. So I've had the privilege of leading up the Community Connections and Communications Committee, and our members are myself, Mark Carell, Alex Tomes, Michelle Schultz, Eileen Houston-Stewart, Danielle Steidel, D'Lo Duval, and Julie Cobb. And so we, uh, try to meet every couple of weeks on Friday mornings for about an hour, and we started, uh, just brainstorming ideas to increase our connections and communications within the community, we talked about what we were already doing, we had a priority of really making sure that we were focusing on both one-way and two-way communication. We surveyed our principals to find out what they were already doing within the communi- community and on how they were already communicating with their families, and then we also focused on Talking Points was, which is the new app that was rolled out by the district. And then after meeting for a couple of weeks, we, uh, developed some goals and priorities based on the information that we gathered from our principals. We, uh, really wanted to highlight the building's spotlights because our buildings have really been doing a great job of focusing on social media this year and really pro- producing some of that information out to the public, and also communicating with their families through Talking Points and other newsletters. And then, um, we had this wonderful idea about signage because we wanted to showcase, uh, the tax dollars at work for our bond projects, because lots of people will ask, like, what is the money going for, and you can get on and look at the list, but we are currently in process right now of creating that preliminary signage design, and we're gonna post those outside, so the new turf and track and field areas, we're gonna put those outside those areas so that people, when they drive up or drive by, they're like, oh, these are our tax dollars at work, this is what we're using for the bond. So we thought that was a great way, you see that I was on construction sites all over town.
Highways, and highways do that.
Yes, exactly, we're like, we love that idea, so people are like, oh, this is what they're using the money for. So that's currently our really most, um, current project that we're trying to get done, we want that out and, um, in this, in the yards before the, um, April vote. And then we have, uh, planned, it's wonderful to have Julie Cobb on our committee because she is really trying to involve the foundation, and so they're going to, um, start a show-me real estate tour, um, in the spring involving, uh, Dr. McGinnis, our newest superintendent, and really engaging some of those individuals within our schools so they can see what's happening and kind of help promote, um, real estate, bringing people to our community, what else we can, we could do with that. Um, we've also, uh, been working still and talking about the community breakfast for next year, uh, this year, you know, it was housed at Missouri Western and how we can just keep, um, making that better every year. And then we are working on a partnership with Rosecrans and the Civic Leadership Event with their airshow, and that's still in preliminary stages as well, but just some ideas and things that we have been engaging in. Any questions? I would say if you have any ideas for us, we're always happy to hear them.
Did you figure out how you were funding those, uh, uh, signs?
You said you were paying.
Okay, I got it.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Community eligibility, um, I think that's, is that you two?
Yeah, that's fine. You wanna start?
You start.
Okay.
You start.
Uh, I just kinda wanted you, uh, just to provide the board with some, um, uh, background information on the community eligibility for provisions for free lunch. We actually talked about this, I went back and looked, we talked about it in June, um, about where we stood, uh, Desi does have uh, some provisions for free lunch, uh, for all kids, uh, free breakfast and lunch. And there's nothing we would like to do more than to offer free breakfast and lunch for every kid, but we have to make sure that we are, um, doing it and being, uh, good stewards of taxpayers' dollars and, and also, uh, being fiscally responsible. And so, we have went in and, uh, plugged those dollars in, and I think I provided that information for you, but we would lose about a hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars a month um, if we did that, uh, right now, and obviously, um, that was kind of a, a roadblock or, you know, a stop here, um, and so, um, I have been, I, I sent some information to, uh, thirty-four superintendents that are in the consolidated K C group, uh, and, uh, the only response that I received was from Kenny Rodrick, and it's usually a very responsive group, so I don't know that too many of them are looking into this right now, I think they're waiting for somebody to pull the trigger, but Grandview, uh, who is very similar to us as far as, uh, the number of students that they have on free and reduced lunch, um, the population is quite a bit smaller, but um, a lot of the same things that we deal with, Grandview deals with as well, and they're looking into it for twenty-five, twenty-six. So that's the information I have, uh, right now, and then I would entertain any, uh, questions, I know Ms. Lanning asked uh, for this agen- for this item to be put on the agenda for a discussion, and like I said, we haven't followed up on it since, uh, since June.
Can you, um, explain what the C E P program, like, why is it different than what we're currently doing? Cause I don't know that everyone understands that.
Well, right now, uh, the funding that we receive, so we go in and we get a percentage, we have free kids, we have reduced kids, and we go in and so we, we pay a price, and then the C E P would be district-wide, is the difference.
Rather than.
So rather than per building.
Rather than having some buildings that are all free and reduced, rather than having some buildings that have some free and reduced, that would, we would essentially qualify as a community rather than individually.
Yeah.
Um, when we've talked about this, Dr. Seagres.
Yeah, he's supposed to be the one.
Yeah, I'm glad he's not, it's fine, um, so, when we talk about this, I, I consistently hear about the costs, which I understand, um, is part, part of the problem, though, as I understand it, is that we don't have a way to ensure, because through this, you would have to make sure that a very, very high percentage of those free and reduced lunch forms or applications were completed.
Yep, forms are an issue.
Anyway, um, so I, the reason why I asked for this to be put back on is essentially for the board to decide, is if, if this is something that we want to look deeper into, again, I've got, I've heard the, we can't afford it, can't do it, can't be done, um, but I would just like to really see that we, that we, that we tease that out, that we absolutely make sure that this is not something that is feasible right now, which it likely is not for the upcoming year, but some sort of, okay, here's the program, here's what we'd offer, and here's how we need to, how, what we would need to do to get there.
Well, I, I clicked on the Desi link, I was looking at it, and it's very confusing, I felt, when you look at it, but it was talking about that students wouldn't even fill out a free and reduced lunch form.
They don't.
Yeah, we, and that, that's one of the challenges that we face, and, um, I mean, parent engagement, obviously, is an issue that we have, uh, district-wide all the time, and that, this is just another reason we just can't get folks to fill it out, and I don't know, you know, a lot of time, I mean, there's different reasons, yeah, some people don't, they're prideful, you know, they don't want to, uh, feel like they need us, uh, they need free lunch or re- reduced lunch, and so, um, our numbers are kinda skewed. I don't know how many buildings we have that are totally free, but I, I believe the, all the title buildings are, right, is that right, Dr. Seagres?
I don't know off the top of my head, yeah, I believe, I believe it.
I think we have ten that are free right now, at least ten.
And I also think.
We have high school, right, is, uh, Lafayette is one, um, and I think there's at least six elementary schools, uh, two meal schools.
And I know that as a parent, like, at the beginning of the year, like, you're given all these informational, like.
It's too much.
It is a lot, and I know that me, I look at the forms and I'm going to do the bare minimum of what I ha- have to fill out, like, I know that doing like a meal form, I know my kid isn't going to qualify anyway, and so I just skip the form, okay, but if I knew that it was, like, if it was like mandatory or everybody needed to, then I would do it, you know, but I know I don't have to, so I don't.
So is, so is this, and so this, so I, so I don't, I don't mean to belabor this since it's an informational item.
Yeah.
I would just like for us to decide to or not to move forward with finding out more about this, to get a definitive answer of if we can't do it immediately, like, in the upcoming year, why we can't do it, and then we can decide whether or not that's something we want to work towards or not.
Well, I, I don't, like I said in the very beginning of the conversation, um, it, it's a priority of the Board of Education, or it's gonna have to become a priority of the Board of Education, there are certain, uh, pockets of dollars, what I would say is that for twenty-five, twenty-six, I would recommend that you not even look into it, and the reason is because of the financial responsibility that's, the burden that it's gonna put on. Now, can we gather more information? Absolutely.
Well, and, and I was. And that's the thing, is, is, we estimated last year, and the estimate was it was gonna be a hundred and seventy-four thousand a month.
And it's twenty-eight.
We've run real numbers now, and it's a hundred and eighty-nine thousand a month, and again, it's not to say that we can't, it, it is just, it's what I go back to all the time, is that, here's the pie, how would you as a board like to divide the pie?
You just legislated, you just.
So, do you wanna put it towards salaries, do you wanna put it towards benefits, do you wanna put it towards, uh, you know, capital improvements? Do you wanna put it towards, you know, and, and if you say as a board, we wanna commit that, yes, we wanna put that towards making sure all of the students have free lunch and breakfast, philosophically, I'm, I'm a hundred percent on board with you. If that's what the board decides they want to do.
Can I, can I run that, can I run this into the mill a little bit here, so let's see, today, current state is that uh, any family, any student in any school can fill out a form and qualify for reduced or free, is that true?
They can try it.
They can try it.
They can fill out the form, but, yeah, they have to meet the guidelines.
Correct, so, but, but, right, so, so, yeah, so if, i- if you have a need, you can fill out a form and qualify, and that doesn't matter where.
In fact, we encourage everyone to fill it out.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, Whitney, what you're asking is, does the board wanna pursue a state where we pay for, everybody's lunches everywhere?
Yes and no.
Okay.
So, I'm not suggesting that we pay for everyone's lunches.
Okay.
What I'm suggesting is that we assess whether or not there are funding opportunities to ensure that every kid in our school district, because we are a high free and reduced percentage lunch school district, seventy-five percent, seventy-six, seventy-four, that we, if that, if that creates a potential to get to the point where every kid could get a free meal while they're at school, which you would think would be standard, but is not, that that's something that we move towards? I, I hear, I hear verbally the responses of, nope, can't do it, here's how much it would cost. I would just like, and this is why I'm bringing it up, to see if the rest of the board would like it as well, for us to start having more intentional conversations with actual information that says, okay, you cannot, and I get it, we can't, we lo- we cannot do it for the upcoming year, but if that's something that we want to try to get to in a year, two years, three years, we have to know what the problem is now, so to identify what the issue is, and then move towards that.
And, and I guess my question is, is, I'm, I'm not, the, the issue is funds.
I understand that, but my, but again, if I'm saying I want to buy something, if I wanna buy something, there's a lot of information that I have to get before I do that, like, for, for instance, we just stood up, we just did the whole thing at the high school.
See, I, I think this is much, it's simpler than that, it's whether or not you wanna allocate funds to do that.
But.
The, it's, it's not like, it's not like we can say, we're gonna save so much money each year to go toward it, because this is going to be the same cost every year.
So what I would like, what I would, I would just like to have a more intentional conversation about whether or not this program is something that we could implement in our school district for our kids, I hear what you're saying, right, but parents have the ability to fill out the form, but we've talked about parent engagement, not filling out the forms, who does that hurt? You know what I mean, it hurts our kids, and I know you and I have had a lot of conversations about what happens, and I think that we have great staff, but there still is a part, or a, a section of our kids, that when they, when they don't have funds on their account, I, I know we've talked about, we're not taking food from them and those types of things, we've talked about that, but there's still a feeling of, my parents didn't pay my bill, for whatever reason, and, and again, I just worry that that's what we put the oneness on our kids, so all I'm asking for is if this is something that we might want to do in the future, that we start talking more intentionally about it, just at a work session.
And I will tell you that, we said that, I mean, Becky evaluates it every year.
I haven't seen it, though, I haven't seen it.
Well, I'm, I'm showing it to you right now, I, I told you last year when we had this conversation what the cost would be, that's, that's the evaluation, it's do you as a board want to take that piece of that pie and put it there?
So just to be clear, do we, are we, are we, are you thinking that, so we have seventy, help me, four percent that, that receive free and reduced or qualify? Because what are, are we talking about?
Well, if they qualify, they're, I mean, they're.
We're seventy percent free and reduced.
Yeah, seventy percent.
Seventy, thank you, and so we have seventy that.
Get it.
That get it, so what we're really talking about is funding the thirty that don't qualify.
Well, and some of those may be reduced, they may not be getting free, they may be reduced.
I understand.
Yeah.
So this is, so this is my ask of the, of the board, and that you all can decide if you wanna move forward this, just like, I'll give you a heads up, the next one's gonna be an ask, too, that you don't have to move forward on, all my ask is, I wanna find out more about this, this program. I just wanna find out more about the program.
Program, is this a funding program?
Yeah, the community eligibility for provision of free lunch, it's a program through Desi, I just wanna know more about the program. For the potential of providing free lunches to all our children.
I, 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 I'm, I'm not sure what it is you want to know more about.
The program is, it would cost us.
I wanna know how it works.
It's all right here on this website, that the link.
And I am a volunteer, and so I would like our staff to look through all of this, the overview and the guidance, and come back and say, yep, here's the pros, here's the cons, here's the cost, yes or no, I would just like it at a work session and something that we work towards. But I'm just one person.
So, Gabe.
I have all the, we have all the information, right, yeah.
What you said, it's something that we can't do for this next year.
Absolutely not.
But somewhere down the line, we can get back to that, and the need may be greater or less.
Greater or less.
When we get back to it, somewhere past this school year, since we can't do it right now, is it that imperative that we look that information up for now?
Well, I, and, but I, I do think, I'm gonna go back to the beginning of the conversation, I think it, you have to prioritize what you want as a Board of Education. If it's something that you feel like you, that you wanna fund, then fund it, but, you know, you're gonna take away from something else. But there have to, whenever they, when Desi put this out there, obviously, there are some confu- it's very confusing, and, um.
Well, and that, and that's why I'm asking, I'm not sure what, and, and I mean this completely respectfully, I'm not sure what to bring back to you for more information.
So what?
Because it is a very, you can see, it's a ridiculously complex formula, it's just like, it's just like if you said, I want you to come back and explain Missouri school funding to me, I, I can give you all the information, but I don't know that, I don't know that I can take C E P and break it down anything, well, here's the formula, and we plug the numbers in, and we look and see, can we do it for no cost, or is it a minimal cost, or is it actually, you know, we're ahead to do C E P? Some districts are ahead to do C E P, and they automatically do it, and if you look on that spreadsheet we sent you, it puts it in red when it, when it doesn't, it's just like we're looking right now whether we anticipate, whether we wanna estimate our funding for the year with, with, with Desi.
And I think this might actually, I mean, this. And I think this might actually, I mean, this, the conversation might even need to be deeper than the Board of Education or the public education system. It could be a legislative issue because the amount that we get reimbursed, that's what's driving the, the cost. So we get reimbursed more for what we're, the, the program that we're in right now
Right.
than what you would get reimbursed from the community eligibility provision. So that, that's what's driving the issue. So I mean, I think, so on a free lunch, we get reimbursed um on a family rate, we get reimbursed four forty-six and two eighty-four on breakfast. I don't have what it would be on the community provisions, but it's less than those two numbers, and that's, that's where the catch is.
And rather than us just having this conversation where we say words, if you, if we could have a conversation in a work session that has the things that you're referring to, but not specifically, if we could have that, and then we could say, okay, here's why we can't do this, and back to what you just said and the items that we just approved. If it's, hey, this is a great idea in theory legislators, but here's why it doesn't work, and here's how we would like to advocate for it to be changed. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So it's not gonna, it may not happen next year, but it's just like a long-range plan. If it's something that we know that our kids need, I'd like to see us somehow working towards that. Rather than just saying, can't do it this year. Well, guess what? You ain't gonna be able to do it next year either. Unless you start working toward it.
At the last minute.
Right.
And then it's an emergency, like if we're trying to.
And again, I'm going back to saying, it's not that you can't do it, it's just you have to decide as a board, how do you wanna allocate resources?
I think, I think, I think what we're talking about is you're further down the road of actually plugging it into the budget, the numbers and plugging into the budget. I wanna know the details of the program to see if it, show me why it won't work, and then I'll shut up about it. Not likely, but I will act like I will. And then we can figure out why this won't work and what we need to do to make it work. It may never happen. It may be a pipe dream, but I think.
We can have Becky tell.
We've talked to Becky about this in the past, cause I remember our academic services team talked with Becky about doing this. If I remember correctly, there was an issue with it opening us up to being targeted. Am I right here? For academic performance. And so I'm just gonna say that piece from our academic services side, so.
First I've heard of it. You, you know what I mean, like that?
Yeah, but Becky is, Becky is super knowledgeable on all those pieces too.
I know.
So we did have a conversation with her maybe a year ago.
And I know, and I know that, I know that we've talked about this, but it's always been very like, no, we can't do it, or here's a problem, or here's a problem. Let's sit down, if this is something that we want to look at. Again, long-range plan didn't just come up at one meeting. Like we talked about it, we saw what we can do, what we can't do. Do we need to use our ten thousand dollar lobbyists to go help us with something like this? I don't know.
And yeah, and I, I'm just, you know, just looking at the numbers that they have down there, and um they're the ones obviously that are driving this. I mean, they're, they would be the ones that could help us with the funding piece of it, cause it's federal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and on the website, when you look at it, it says, instead of household applications, schools use claiming percentages based on the number of identified students for reimbursement.
Well, there's two different types of reimbursement. It's the, the forms, and then there's another thing, what's it called? Huh? Direct certification. And so you have to figure whether direct certification benefits you more. I mean, it's just a, it's a mess.
It's complex, which is why I would like a work session.
Okay. Yeah, we can do that.
Cause now I have lots of questions, but I don't wanna use our time to ask them now.
It would be good to have Becky here.
Yeah.
Yeah, and maybe even Debbie from the federal programs.
Yeah.
All right, we're gonna put it on the March agenda, Robert. You got it.
The work session?
Yeah.
On the work session.
Okay, we'll have, we'll have Becky come.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay.
All right, the second one is uh childcare for parenting students. And uh we've talked a little bit about this as well, and I just kinda wanted to provide some information, and I'll open it up. I want you guys to know what we're doing. We're currently gathering data regarding our parenting teens and the challenges they face as they try to continue their high school education. Uh Parents as Teachers has many supports and resources available for these students, however, some still drop out of school and choose to homeschool. Academic Services had a goal to increase graduation rates, and I believe this is a way to help improve this. Uh some school districts offer onsite childcare for these students. Um we are currently exploring uh what that might look like at our ELCs. Uh this information, along with other childcare options, will be provided during the Early Childhood Program Evaluation. Um right now, I would just tell you that uh the space is the issue. Uh whenever we expand to three early learning centers, then I think our options become um better. Would you agree with that statement, D'Lo? Um so that's kinda where we're at with it. We just, we can't define or we can't um figure out exactly where we want it. And it's another thing, we feel like it's a, um it would be good uh for the population. Uh we're not against this at all. It's just a matter of uh how we go about doing it.
It's all new.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, the next one's mine. An update for MSBA. And I will apologize, I would normally attach the report, um and I was not able to complete it in order to be able to attach that. If you look at your workstations, and then I gave it to Donna to put on the agenda as well, it's two handouts. The first one, it's a copy of this year's priorities, as we were mentioning, as we were mentioning earlier about about the legislators in Great Northwest days. Um it's a good idea in order to look at, at the priorities of MSBA. I've looked at them. I think that they um align with our needs as well. I know that there will be members of our board attending meetings next week. At the representatives and the senators um to discuss what's important in our district and why. Um it was a good meeting. It ran over three days. And I have a list of spring dates that I will email everybody about um trainings and meetings and things like that. I took um two workshops I think are going to be extremely beneficial. One was about um the, the relationship in between the board president and the superintendent. I think it was extremely knowledgeable, and I think it will help us in the next year as we are on board a new super. And there's also another attachment, and this one was really, really cool. Cause they're creating a new database, and it will have lots of categories, and I was able to get a, a copy of one. And it's where every school district is able to look up information about your district. And it had a copy of our census information in all of the categories. And then I learned how to look at the information as a way to help us choose our individual needs and the priorities. Like on example, I was able to look at the information and tell that twenty percent of our population, um they're moving around every single year, and that's big. And then I was able to tell about, um, well, I could go on and on about that, okay, but I was just really, really excited. And then at the end of it, I felt extremely smart, and so I'll be able to give that information to the board probably at our next, at the retreat. Um at like a time that there's lots of information that I'll be able to share. Um and there was also information about um the superintendent's evaluation. Um a long meeting about advocacy and the things that boards should be doing at this point, or that you need to be doing at this point. Um and then other information about board engagement and opportunities of other training and development. And at this point, are there any questions about my meetings? Or you can always call or text or email me as well.
Thanks for going to those. We were three days in Columbia, Jop City?
In Columbia, yes.
And a Saturday.
Yes, and a Saturday. Yeah, so. I enjoy it. I mean, at times it's a lot, you know, but then I arrive and I learn all this information from all of these other members of the board, and it just reminds me of our purpose and our why, so I do enjoy it. Thank you.
Okay, future meetings in advance, February tenth, there's no school teacher work day. Uh five-thirty PM board work session, uh February fourteenth, no school professional development. February seventeenth, President's Day, district is closed. And February twenty-fourth, uh five-thirty is the regular scheduled Board of Education meeting. We need to adjourn to executive session pursuant to six-ten-zero-two-one, closed meetings and closed records for one legal, three hiring, firing, disciplining, promoting of particular employees, and thirteen individually identifiable personnel record, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees.
Is there a motion? Thank you. We have a motion a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned.